We are going to go in exec session, but we need to vote on that then, so.
I move that we go into executive session to discuss contact negotiations and the employment history of particular individuals. Second.
I'm Pat, and thank you both. And Tricia will call the roll. And for everyone's sake, the microphones and the cameras are back, so we're looking at a better quality broadcast from now on. It took a while to get all the pieces back together, but bit by bit you build. So, Tricia, thanks.
Rob Ainsley.
Yes.
Erin Crowell. Sean Eversley Bradwell.
Yes.
Kelly Evans.
We got to make co-hosts, we're gonna mute them. No, you should say ask to unmute. You try Erin. Ask to unmute Erin.
Erin Crowell, I'm here.
I'm all.
Kelly Evans. Sean Eversley Bradwell.
Yes.
Elgin Harris.
Yes.
Nicole LaFaye. Boi Melang.
Yes.
Chris Malcolm.
Yes.
Patricia Waslam.
Yes.
All right, we will go into exec session. For those that are hybrid at home, there's a different Zoom address to join us in exec. And we're gonna move to conference room. What are we doing?
Lauren Prue.
The camera is like, yeah, right. Bye from ICSD, it's Tuesday. Are we? There's.
Elgin's on, we may have to pause.
Okay, good. And Chris is coming on, good. All right, everyone, we are back and we will get started. And I don't believe there's a modification to the agenda, I think we're all set. We did have tentatively a presentation from our folks driving literacy in the district, and that's gonna be pushed off for the next public meeting at the end of the month. We look forward to that. Presentation. Literacy is what we do, Dr. Brown, right? Isn't that kind of like high up on, okay, good. But we'll just slide in, public comment period. Do we have anyone signed up or? All quiet on the, okay. It's a beautiful day, everyone's, well, it's right now, I guess, so we missed that. Everyone enjoying the day, some note board responses. We do have student representatives from the high school here, so there you go. It's all yours.
All right. Unfortunately, I haven't shared them today. I feel like I'll say something. Square is having a long experience to happen with first quarter at IAS. Tattler just released its October issue, and that another incredible issue, highly recommended reading. The athletic teams are also reading ahead of their seasons. The girls' tennis team just won their sectional match over today, and I just have to, on the turf right now, I will give the junior girls soccer team twenty by thirteen goals.
Um, in soccer?
Yeah.
Well, I drove by, the folks are funny, I didn't.
Who were they playing?
I'll buy, right, I think.
Oh, come on, come on. I was like, right, go ahead. Maybe we shouldn't name with a, with a.
Um, and the boys' varsity soccer team, I don't know if that happens, but has their staff sent file away tomorrow. The first musical concert of the year will be taking basically a discount as the IAS orchestra's band acquires formal together in the annual concert concert. Due to the sheer size of the performance, it won't be going to the public, but it will be recorded and possibly live streaming. I really look forward to playing on stage in person again.
We're also happy to record a renewed working relationship with the school administration. Today, we had a long and productive discussion with Mr. Trumble. We presented many issues that students felt they needed addressed. Among these issues were study halls, lunches, and senior privileges. While the year is running smoothly and both new students are adjusting well, many have more questions about the implementation of weekly testing. Students seem eager and ready for this new program, but many have more questions. First off, do you know exactly when the start date will occur? Are there any more details that the district can provide about the roll-up? I know the students would be grateful for any more information.
The past few org meetings have extensively covered nurse and school plus faculty shortages. In addition to these shortages, we also know and have felt the effects of the current teacher shortage throughout the district. I believe that teacher shortages have been a problem for a while, and we were wondering what the district is doing and has done to address this. Teachers are having difficulty getting subs to cover when they're out, and students have been noticed. Many students are finding themselves in classes where not only is the teacher out, but there is also not a substitute, resulting in departments having to scramble by teachers to cover classes. We know that there is a big chunk of money in reserve in this year's budget, so we are hoping that money is being allocated to hiring new teachers and incentivizing that. I also know that ICSD is committed to a culture of inclusion and equity, but we have not been seeing this in the current teachers that have hired. We're wondering why ICSD is going to hire more diverse teachers. Also, I'd like to thank Dr. Brown for hearing us during the last meeting and sending the positive public case note.
I follow.
The students did notice and appreciate what the district is doing.
Thanks, Ethica. Hi, and board responses. Go ahead, John. We're gonna be discussing this later on this evening in terms of talking about public comments at board meetings, and one of the recommendations and suggestions is for the board to do additional research prior to responding to make sure that we have accurate information. And so, in regards specifically to what the students have asked about teacher hiring and teacher shortages, this may be an example where it gets put on the agenda for the next board meeting, and it's a much more robust conversation as opposed to folks just sort of putting information out there that they have not had time to research. So this is gonna be a recommendation that we do, not just for what students respond to, but what community members bring to us to make sure that we're actually engaged in an informative dialogue as opposed to it. So I've put it on my notes. As one of the board officers, I'll have a conversation with President Ainsley and with Dr. Brown, and I hope it's okay for our student reps that that's something that we discuss again, much more informed. Because we could say some of the things that we're doing now, but I prefer that we are much more thorough and maybe even have who dare join us in terms of the work that she's been doing as well. So that makes sense. So again, this is part of our conversation for later as well, but I just wanted to start in there. Pat.
Well, I just will make a comment agreeing that the Tattler is doing excellent jobs this year, and I would just like to inform our viewing public that you do not have to be part of Ethica High School if you get a copy of the Tattler. They're being handed out for free at Whitman's and PNC and various other places around the community, and that's where we are, so.
They're all over town.
And I.
And it's online.
I'm tired of reading things online. I'm tired of talking to people online. I just wanna pick up a Tattler and read it and recycle it properly, yeah.
Why, or anything?
Well, I assume that one of our admin staff who are top of us is going to speak about implementation of the weekly screening test, so.
Yeah, superintendent reports, I think we'll address that. And we'll bounce it to Chris and others. I would say, I get the Cornell Daily Sun every it's not daily anymore, and it's really thin, and the Cornell Daily Sun is a weak version of the Tattler. I mean, you know, the Tattler so far exceeds what the Cornell Daily Sun is anymore that it's, you know, it's not even worth reading. So I just, I am a part of, I like the Tattler, it's thick, there's a lot of writing there. Anyway. Chris, anything from your perspective?
No, I think you all said it very well, and I'm looking forward to further conversation, but also the ability to do some research and be able to have a better dialogue around subjects. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. So, not seeing anyone else, so if we could move on, thank you, Ethica. And, yeah, disappointed that the public won't be able to go to the lounge, so, but it's, streaming will be okay. Maybe somebody can sneak in, but probably I would be noticed. Sorry, Lily, I can't. So let's move on to consent agenda. There are some items in the consent agenda that we will address directly. But let's move it in second, and then we can discuss.
I move. Okay, I'll move the approval of the consent agenda. Second.
Second, I'm Pat, and then then if we could just speak to a few items, certainly item six point one is the audit review and adoption. Amanda, perhaps you'd want to just speak to that.
I would love to, and I'm wondering if it's easiest for the public and for folks online as well to be able to just look at one little chart that we took, which is part of the audit report. So Tricia's gonna just present that for us, which is so lovely, thank you. And essentially, it's our ten-year lookback, right? So it's in the audit report, it's sort of toward the end. It's a chart that Jay True really used to ask us to sort of focus on, because it was really very easy for to sort of boil down the audit report into sort of one document. And so, this is, again, we'll make this available online, but it's also not so colorful in the audit report itself. And so what I love about this chart is, right, it takes the look back over the course of a number of years, so you can actually track that. Tricia, is it possible to slide that in it? Ah, that's fantastic. That's perfect. Thank you so much. So, the revenue piece here, underneath the orange, those are all the monies that we bring in from the different sources. The yellow is the money that goes out to pay for the operations and the different ways that that money sort of is utilized across the district to ensure that we are in session, right? And so remember that these years here are unique when you look back, because they are the COVID years, unfortunately, right? And we're still dealing with that. And so you're gonna see revenues that are coming in that you may not see in years prior. So I'm just gonna some of the major items and some of the things that I'm gonna focus on, I'm gonna be very brief, because the audit is very dense. And so this is just a little highlight of sort of what you're going to be seeing there. The major income, the major revenue for our district is always going to be our tax base. And so that top line there, you'll see that always increasing. There are years when it is spiked. That's the year that we went over the tax cap, but you sort of see that trending upward, you know, a couple million each year. And then that increase is determined by our tax cap calculation. All of these years moving from this year on have been within the tax cap calculation, and therefore we do not need a super majority. And then there are many other revenues. One of the second largest is the revenue from state sources, which is our state aid. I want to make a note of that one. If you notice, this number has dropped. If you remember, the state not only froze, but then decreased our state aid and then gave us federal dollars to backfill the difference. But we still got a decrease in state aid. It took us back to the 2017 state aid amount. So we're actually trying to pay 2021 bills with 2027 dollars. And so if that doesn't make sense to you, it, or 2017, it doesn't make sense to us either, right? And so the federal source I mentioned, this was the emergency COVID aid. You're gonna see other federal sources in future budget documents and audit reports as well. And then you're gonna see, you know, just a few other things. This one bump last year. Remember, we left the health consortium. There was a balance that was due to us from the health consortium. Now that we're self-funded, that was one-time-only funds. So if you look here, sort of our revenue, our real revenue, if we don't count that, was 128 million. This year was 129 million, the year that we just closed. You look at revenue and you say, okay, well, you at least wanna have this much revenue to pay the bills, right? You wanna try to bring in enough money so that your expenditures, you're not dipping into your fund downs. When you dip into your fund downs, you're gonna get years that are sort of, they're gonna be in the negative, right? Because you essentially need to go to your savings account to pay for your operations. And that was the year that we corrected that and went over the tax cap, because we were dipping into the fund downs to pay for our operations using a savings account and unable to rebuild it. This year, it got really close. I mean, we pretty much, what we brought in and what we spent, we were very, very close. $113,000 to the good, which means that that was $113,000 more than we brought in than what we spent. And you're sort of seeing, you know, that definitely is a difference from the year prior, even when you can, this is, these are numbers not considering the health insurance consortium piece. So some of the drivers, what, you know, changed, where are we spending more money? This chart is really good. It's on people, instruction, right? You can see the jumps here from, you know, 60 million to 62 million to 65 million to $600,000. We had to increase the number of positions to deal with COVID. We were teaching virtually, we were teaching hybrid, we were teaching in person. We were trying to cover with substitutes. We needed to cover the number of teachers that we needed for the physical distancing requirements that we had. So we needed more paraprofessionals, we needed more just staff in general. So you're gonna see that's where we drive to. And we also had negotiated contracts that increased salaries each year. So that's a both and situation that drives those numbers up. Transportation went up. We were delivering food, we were traveling all over the place, and again, negotiated contracts. Operation of the plants, employee benefits, those are all things you'll see they trend upward. But the employee benefits this year due to COVID, we really, there was, I don't wanna say, I'm gonna say there was a delay in spending with health insurance, because people could not go to the doctor. Things were closed. They couldn't seek the care that they needed, because you actually couldn't go to get services. And so we're gonna anticipate that this will continue to rise, because people that delayed those services will now go and get those services that they needed. One other thing that you might wanna look at, there were some special items here, unclassified special items. This was actually a lot of like technology supports that we needed in that year, furniture costs that we had. We sort of right-sized that in 2021. So those are sort of the things I just wanted to highlight, along with this general, so this is the general fund, the one that the fund that we take to the voter, voting public each May. You're gonna see information on our capital fund, our special aid fund, which is all of our title monies. You're gonna see separate reports on extra class. Extra class is all the clubs. So if you ever wanted to know what clubs are approved, what their budgets are, what their revenue is, what their expenditures are, and the tracking of that, that's in there as well. There's management comment letters around sort of what we think are trends, what we think we need to do better. There's gonna be opinions from the auditors around, you know, findings, and those are very few, and those always have to have a plan of action on how to deal with that if there is a finding, so you'll see those as well. And all of this, we bring this to you because by law, we need this to be board-approved, and then what we do then is submit these financial statements online through portals to state aid, Department of Budget. These are all required of us as school districts for full transparency. Because again, we are a government entity, we use taxpayer dollars, we wanna make sure that everybody can see the state of the operations and how we utilize those funds. So that's the summary of the audit report for you this year.
Thanks, Amanda. And all the documents that we see in front of us are a draft form, and once we vote on them, they will be accepted no longer in draft form.
Correct.
Just to follow up slightly. Prime directive of all board members, serving board members, is fiscal oversight, and that's one of our main jobs. And I would just highlight the executive summary. It's about five pages, and that really, if you wanna get a little, a quick review of a much larger document, the executive summary is the place to go. And in the full financial report for the first time, it's, we are now able to see in a much more detailed, broken-down way, expenses regarding to our healthcare benefits. Before this year, that was not available, because it was not in a consortium, that really, there was not a way to find out what those costs were. And now we're seeing real costs to this district, just this district, not other districts, not a group. And so it's just this district. And so that is a first time, and will be useful in our conversations going forward. So I would really, I would highly recommend that all board members take a look at exec summary. We will vote on this tonight. I believe we have a forum to do so. And this is part of the consent agenda. But again, thanks again to Angela, Amanda, and the entire business office, plus our auditors that come through, do an excellent job. For me, I always, I hate to say it, Amanda, I look forward to the audit, because it's nice to know where, do we actually spend money? That budget that we vote on as a community in May, that's just an estimate. That is just, frankly, a broad outline of what may what may the next year bring. And so we're always kind of in between what's audited and the year we're in and what we're planning, so really a three-year swath of information that we sift through. But it's always very, very good to just get an idea. Look back for exec summary, it has a five-year trailing balance sheets, basically. So, and cash flow documents, just to take a look at. And there is some narrative there for anything that they highlight, a few questions that they address in those audit documents. And we appreciate Chris Malcolm and Anne Reiflin joined the audit committee. And so it was a pleasure to see Anne, and once again, Anne asks great questions. And so those of us that have been on the audit committee for a while, we get it's great to have a fresh look and fresh eyes on what the information is saying and what's in it, and so we appreciate Anne stepping up as a community member to do that. And, Amanda, if you wanna just talk about the official depositories really quickly, there's
Oh, yes.
There is, the next item is we're adding all the.
So banking institutions, right? So that when, as we're receiving taxes, right? Remember that we utilize the company three plus one. They support us in terms of researching rates in which we can invest funds by law, and they can be short-term or long-term in terms of, you know, how we want to how we wanna place our, how we wanna invest our monies or bank our monies. And so this allows us the opportunity to bank with the institutions that are listed there, because that has to be approved by the Board of Education, and gives us the opportunities to be able to say, okay, who has the best interest rates for what type of products, and this allows us the most flexibility.
Take advantage of hopefully a rising interest rate environment. If we're gonna have rising inflation, it'd be great if we got paid more on our cash balances. Those are really the two big items. Any other questions?
Just one statement, it'd be good for the public to know, and this may have already been said. Our audit is done by independent auditors and checked, so this is not something the district did in-house. And the audit committee is the only committee that boards of education are required to have by law. So our policy committee, or our facilities committee, or our finance committee are smart to have, but we're required to have an audit committee. As Rob said, our number one responsibility as board members is the full share of responsibility we have for the day.
And apparently, I'm chair of the audit committee now, which I Chris didn't, well, anyway. Chris is busier than I am, so happy to do that.
Rob, you were just outvoted, that's all.
Yeah, I know. It always seems to be that way. So I see Chris, and so we do have, we have, if we could, it's been moved second to Tricia, please, do the roll.
Scott Ainsley.
Yes.
Erin Crowell.
Yes.
Sean Eversley Bradwell.
Yes.
Elgin Harris. Boi Melang.
Yes.
Chris Malcolm.
Yes.
Patricia Waslam.
Yes.
Excellent, very good.
Elgin.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. So very good, consent agenda passes, and Dr. Brown, I'll pass it to you.
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity. It's good to be here. No announcements tonight, but we were hoping to update on where we are with the weekly testing. And I believe Miss Talcott received some information while we were in check session, so I will turn it over to Miss Talcott for the latest and most updated news that I'm hoping to hear about, too.
Yeah, wonderful. All right. Hi, everyone. Good to see everyone. For those who don't know me at home, I'm Lily Talcott. I get to serve as the deputy superintendent for this school district. We have been in close communication with a company called Empowering, for those who don't know. It's a national company that wanted to bid with the federal government to offer free testing to some districts around the country. And as soon as the testing mandate came out, I believe it was a day or two later, we reached out to them to get things rolling. So that was very early September. We've been meeting and talking with them to get all of the logistics rolling. And as one might imagine, there is a huge surge for their services. And they're working really, really hard, I will say, to keep us in the loop and make sure this happens as quickly as possible. Here's what we do know. The materials, it appears, are on their way. We over-ordered a great number of testing kits to make sure that we would have enough available. We have reached out to families and staff and asked them to register. Again, I know it's really frustrating through this company, but because families will share their information directly with Empowering and access their results through that portal, we needed families to register that way. And so registration is still ongoing. You can still register, and as soon as we get materials and we're able to begin, then we will still be able to test you as long as it's in there basically the night before. We know that our training for our testing team is occurring tomorrow and Thursday, so that's great. You have a great team of folks. Retired nurses, retired administrators. We're hiring some folks on the personnel report this evening, thank you very much, to provide support and travel to each building and implement the testing and oversee all of the logistics associated with it. Again, it's an anterior mirror swab, so front of the nostril swab. And students and staff will have to take two samples. One is for pool testing purposes, or there's up to 24 samples that are sampled together. Any of theirs are positive, then they rerun all 24 individual samples, which is why they brought it to. And again, that testing team just will work with every precareer through adults in order to do that collection and then essentially snap off the swab. If you see this at the mall, right, and put the top on, make sure that it's properly labeled. There are scanners. There are scanners, et cetera, involved as well. And then we'll travel to the next school as well. We anticipate, or our hope is that we can start the week of the 18th. That's what we've been really, really hopeful for. But I just got off the phone with the folks from Affinity, and they're not certain that everything will be here by then. So as soon as we know what the tracking numbers are and when they're here, we will certainly let the community know. And in the meantime, we have all of our logistics ready to go, and we've got our people in place. We've got the places that we're going to be doing it. We've got, you know, all, all of these other things set up. So we're ready, we're ready to roll as soon as other materials arrive.
Thank you. Over to our update.
Anything else, Dr. Brown? This is your opportunity. Okay, you're good, all right. Any, right, looking for questions there, Isis?
So in your statement, you said the community will let know. Will you let students know, and the parents, or?
Yeah, we'll let you know, absolutely, yeah.
Also, so you said that the, what this is, that it was sorted out in terms of where and when. Can you offer some insight into that?
Yeah, sure. So at, at IHS, we're looking at a zero period of lunch times. Yeah. We don't know which date, so that's, that's. Yeah.
Can students register at any time, or is there a thing for registration deadline?
No, no, it's really anytime. They do need their caregivers, right? If you're, if you're 17 or younger, you have to have your caregiver be the one to, to provide the permission. But if you're 18 or older, obviously, you can register yourself. Like I said, as long as it's even just the night before, because what we do is we pull the file from their platform and then we upload it into our student management system to make sure that it's, it's, it's listed there as well. And we can always write a kid's name and their birthday on the, on the sample itself, and then they'll still be able to run it in the lab as long as they're registered.
On your have question?
Yeah.
Lily, are we, if I was 17 years old, do I have to register every time?
No. So one-time registration.
One-time registration, and it's just picking a, picking a time to stop by, or I, I need to pick a time, whether it's zero or a month?
We are gonna, we're gonna offer times to folks, let them know when their, when their appointments last are. Right, so if you have third-period lunch, we're gonna say, come during third-period lunch, right?
Well, right, just trying to get an idea of, you know, Cornell, you know, obviously, the kids had, had their time, whether it was downtown or wherever it was.
Right.
They would just keep cycling through and had to build it into their day, what, two or three times a week? Or that was last, this, well, this spring, well, all last year, in 2021, okay. So, but once you're, once you have your approval from your parents and you're registered, then it's just really getting at time to go step on.
And showing up for that time. We don't, we certainly don't have the person's power to go say, hey, where's?
No, exactly, it's up to, it's up to, up to the student, you can register at that time, something could come up. But, right, so it is, it is being offered, not, students don't have to be tested, right? So it is, again, it is, it is something that they are choosing to do, all right? Just to be, just to make it sure everyone understands and it is clear. Appreciate it. Thanks for the questions. And if nothing else, go ahead.
Is this also offered to teachers and staff? Yeah.
So are they in, in the process of registering their desire to be tested?
Yeah, so we sent out to app as well.
Anything else? Are we good on this? Opportunity to ask anything else right now? We good? Good, good. Comes up, and so.
It should be an email, then.
There you go. Communication is a, is more is better. And so speaking of that, Sean, we're gonna slide into policies and,
yes, the first policy is one, two, three, zero, public participation at board meetings. This is not a policy that we're presenting for any action, it's more a policy for conversation. Folks who've been following news media across the state and across the nation know that there's been some significant, at times disruptions at various board meetings. Some have been much more hostile, others have been really good conversations. But through the New York State School Board Association, they've been encouraging districts to take a look at their public participation policy. And the policy committee did do so. So while we reviewed this in 2000, in April of 2021, the reality is it has not been significantly altered since 2013. And as we know, there's been pretty significant change, both in terms of virtual board meetings and other ways for folks to participate. I'm gonna, if it's okay with my policy committee colleagues, the questions that we had, one was thinking about whether or not folks should have the ability to read anonymous letters. Boards, school boards, and many across the state do not allow for anonymous letters to be read. In fact, require anyone who is presenting or speaking or participating at the board meeting to state their name and their address. Some folks, some school districts limits who's able to participate or who is allowed to participate by district residents only. Not something, again, that we're advocating for, we're just saying what's out there, what folks have been discussing. We, at times, have not done the best job of stopping people from identifying particular personnel. Usually, whenever it's something negative, we have done a good job of stopping it. But we have to do both ands, so even when there's praise, according to the law, we are not allowed for people to identify particular personnel. So we have, that's a conversation for us to have. And something that we were talking about before is a number of school districts sit and don't have board responses until the following board meeting, where they're allowed to do research, or they place it on the agenda for a future board meeting. So they are able to engage again in a much more informed conversation, so what we were talking about earlier. And some school districts have all public comments addressed to the board president. I don't think that's our community and our culture. And so, but that's one thing that came up. And other school districts across the nation, and including across New York State, provide a timeline or a deadline for folks to notify the board clerk about their willingness or wanting to participate. And usually, it's sometimes the day for or early the day of, to allow the board officers and the district administration to prepare adequately for what the timing of the school board meeting is. Some districts, they allow 15 minutes. Some school districts do participation at the beginning, and then another one at the end of the board meeting. If folks wish, there's a variety of options that are available.
If they wish to comment on whatever was discussed during the meeting, you know, have another opportunity to speak at the end.
And my apology, the last one, some districts only request that participation be about what is currently on the agenda. And other districts say, no, please come speak to us about whatever is on your mind. So those are some of the things that we are researching from looking at sample policies from, again, across the state, including what the New York State School Board Association said. Pat and Moira, I'm sure I missed something, what would add from our conversation? Get the whole policy committee here, so.
Yes, we do. Well, I would just say that we are, some of the things that Sean mentioned that we're seeing in other school district policies, information from NISBA has indicated that there have been court rulings that prohibit, for instance, I, I think I read one court ruling that NISBA cited that if a school board allows public comment at all, allows it to residents, they have to allow it to non-residents. And also, I think I read another one that said, even though some school districts are saying you can only speak to issues that are on the agenda for this meeting, according to one thing I read from NISBA, that, that we have to allow speakers to address anything that's within the board's purview that, that involves district business. So there are, those are two things that people, you know, some districts are including in their policies that there has been some adjudication.
I have nothing to add to that.
Thank you, Pat.
Cover change very, very extensively.
The only thing I would add is that sometimes there's an expectation that board meetings are a place for dialogue. And that is difficult because board meetings are created for the board to complete its business. And years prior to COVID, we would have multiple sessions where we would go to each school and engage in community forums. We would send our reps and our liaisons for, from the board who would attend PTA meetings or site-based council meetings. COVID has disrupted that, and so we find less direct communication between various school communities, parents and caregivers and school board members. My expectation, depending who of us is still on the board, when we are hopefully on the other side of this pandemic, that is something that we will return to because it's feedback that has been invaluable to the work that we're trying to accomplish. So I anticipate that we'll continue to try to find additional ways. And the idea about public participation, any conversation that we want to have as a board, or what we want to do and what we don't want to do, does not stop individuals from contacting individual board members via email. All of our phone numbers are published on the district website. I receive a, a number of handwritten letters in any given week. And we have the Let's Talk portal, and we have administrator. So hopefully, there are multiple ways which folks can communicate with the board in addition to participation at public comment. And what I will also lastly say is that there is not a requirement, even when folks participate in public comment, there is not a requirement by law to enter any public comment into the board minutes or into the quote-unquote public record. That's debatable, right, in terms of what we want to do and how we want to share with our community. Some communities do share, and some communities just say, this person came to speak, or there was public comment. But again, these are all conversations for us to have. Nothing has been decided, we just wanted to make sure we raised it, and then we'll bring it back to the policy committee to see if there's any changes that we want to make to what our current policy is.
And there's no requirement to have?
There is not a requirement to have public.
It is highly encouraged to have public at times, but, but we've, we've, I think we've always been pretty, pretty open, and there were times when we would have a dialogue, you know, in the room when folks are here and they want to address, address an issue once we got into the subjects. And so as long as it's a, it's good conversation, we would take time to do that. But so Sean, you know, I, I can actually, the lighting's pretty good, I can almost read this. And is there anything that we need to address?
No, I don't know if any board members have any reactions, thoughts, things that we should be considering additional? Otherwise, we'll take a look back at the next policy committee meeting.
Right, and so, you know, we encourage the public to come and speak and to log in. And, and I've been reading a lot that in the, in the media about, you know, the subject and fairly disruptive board meetings. And, and the media always start, well, the narrative is always typically dull, school board meetings have become blah, 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 right? And so, wait a minute, we actually discussed very interesting topics, and come on, we started, we've been moving, and we all go home. But.
Not endorsement that there was an interesting Saturday Night Live skit from Toots Go.
Yeah, yes.
Talking about board meetings, I guess.
It's nice that school board meetings have finally made it on Saturday Night Live, and I know that's great.
I, I would also add that we're not even required to have committees, except for the audit committee, but we have, how many committees did we have?
Six.
And, and at those committee meetings, we also have a public comment too.
Yep.
And.
And those are work sessions, effectively.
And the work sessions, and often it's possible to have much more of a back and forth. Though still, even if those, the chair is in a position of sometimes having to do a balancing act to make sure that the business that is supposed to be conducted and it's on the agenda for the committee meeting does move forward. Like there, there are times when there is a real dialogue between members of the public and the committee members. And, and now the, all of our committee meetings are meeting virtually at this point. So it's even easier for people to participate.
So for example, to our student reps, something that we'll talk about next meeting, but our HR committee has been investigating the very questions you've been asking and having in-depth conversations about this very idea, about staff recruitment, about diversity and inclusion, right? So this is an ongoing thing, and we find that all of our committees have much more in-depth conversations about issues, facilities, finance, et cetera. So if there's no other thought or recommend, or idea about this policy, I'll move on to the next one. Fantastic. Policy 1400 is about public complaints and comments to the Board of Education. And this, we are making very few changes to, we've actually made some changes to the policy that are presented on Board Docs. And one, it's simply to be in an alliance with our communication plan, is that what we call it, Lily? What is the? The communication protocol?
Yeah.
To make sure that our caregivers and community and students know that there is, for lack of a better word, in order to how folks should engage in complaints, to be most efficient in this regard. And then we added a couple of sentences that are underlined. For example, that the superintendent may refer complaints to some staff members if appropriate, and individual board members will refrain from expressing any judgment until such time as the complaint may be properly brought before the full board. So those are basically the two things that we've added. It's nothing different, but we just, there are 12, 30, and 1400 are usually paired together. And so we reviewed 1400 in that regard. Anything that I missed back from work?
No, I think, I, I, I think the, the, the difference between the two policies is, one, 1230 is public comment during board meetings, but this is about public comments or complaints for any member of the public. The way to solve every problem is not to come to a board meeting and say, what is the board going to do about this? These are almost always individual personnel issues, and there is a specific channel that, that should be followed. So to, to solve any problem or issue as quickly as possible along the way with the people who can address that issue most efficiently. And so this is, they're related, and they sound similar, but it's a very different approach.
And this is not for a first reading, we'll bring them both back at the same time. I'm not going to make any changes to the first one. Just putting up there for our board's information and to see what we've discussed. Very good.
And I would just add, you know, policy, we often actually talk about who is the audience for a particular policy. And it certainly seems to be that the audience for this are members of the public who want to make a comment or a complaint. And, and like this protocol only works if all of the people who are, are part of the various steps are aware of it and follow it. So that, you know, if, if one of the steps are skipped by the person initiating the comment or the complaint, then the person who's receiving it needs to ascertain that it has been brought to the, the individual who is supposed to hear it. So if it comes to the deputy superintendent, and I'm sure that this is the case, where the deputy superintendent will make sure that the building prin- where the deputy superintendent will make sure that the building principal has been consulted first. I also think, you know, as a classroom teacher, um, classroom teachers should be well aware that the expectation is that they would respond in, by, what is it, uh, three business days to a complaint they've received. And if not, the complainant is being told to go to the building principal. So I think, you know, the more that everybody who might be involved in this protocol is aware, uh, how we want it to, to proceed, um, I think that's what's gonna make it work.
The numbered bullet points certainly, uh, well, it provides a, uh, well, a map or a.
Yeah.
A, a pathway. I'm not sure. It's not that way now, is it?
No, our current one, we had this conversation. Our current one uses semicolons, uh, in a lo, a very long sentence. And we thought it was much more visually, um, yes, uh, informative to outline the actual steps and run over them.
It was so clear, I'd say, wow.
Sorry. You gotta come, keep coming to policy, Rob.
I do.
Even though the semicolons were properly used, this is clearer.
They have three words. Numbered, uh, there's numerics and underlined. It was like, wow, um, not, uh, no chance to, um, not quite, um, understand what the policy is trying to say, so. So you're gonna come back with.
Yep, with those two policies, yep. And we may not make any changes to fourteen hundred. We already have made changes. We'll talk about them once more. We may not make any changes to twelve thirty. We'll let, uh, the board and the community know.
And, uh, are we good? Do you wanna?
Nope, our last policy on the agenda for tonight is our transportation policy. We've discussed this policy at length as a board. It's been through, um, a first reading, uh, back to the policy committee, up for a second reading. It did not pass our last meeting, so it's back up here for a third reading and possible adoption. So if board members have any questions or happy to answer them, uh, but this is a policy that we've been debating and discussing probably six months now, if not a little bit longer.
Yes, and, and, and just a, just a reminder to the public that the reason it didn't pass, um, the last meeting was that we, we only had five members present by the time it came up for adoption and it failed to get five votes. So it was not passed by majority of the board and so, um.
Got other votes. Have there been any changes since that, uh? We voted.
Not a single one since the last reading.
And the, um, and I saw within, well, on board docs, there still was the old language that was crossed out. I mean, you can see the changes.
Yep.
Right, so for anyone who missed all those policy committee meetings, but there are, you can see what has been changed.
And just because maybe we have new audience members and board members weren't here. This, um, board, this transportation policy was done in direct collaboration with, uh, Bobby and Karen and, um, I forget Liz's last name. Say it one more time. Yeah, Liz Burner was the director of transportation. We spent, um, a significant amount of time going through and trying to also write a policy that matches with our current, um, transportation reality as well. Doing some things which I greatly appreciate personally, minimizing travel time for young people as much as possible, uh, the distance for folks that are able to walk. You know, you can take a look at it, but there was a great deal of conversation about how to make our transportation policy, uh, better than what we had previously.
It's a, uh, it's a constant, uh, amorphous thing, um, so, meaning transportation.
Yep.
So it's difficult to draft a policy for all contingencies, but, um, we need to at least vote on it again and, um, and keep working on transportation, obviously. I don't know whether I heard that was moved.
It was moved. So I will move, uh, item eleven point three, transportation policy eighty-four hundred for a third reading and adoption.
Second.
Same with Pat. And, uh, we've discussed, I would hate to say idiosyncrasy, so I won't say it. But Tricia, uh, go ahead and call it all.
Rob Ainsley?
Yes.
Erin Croy?
Yes.
Sean Everly Bradley?
I'm staying.
Eldred Harris?
Yes.
Oralee?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Patricia Wazle?
Yes.
Thanks, everyone. Passes and it's, uh, is adopted and so we change it. And, uh, well, all policies can be edited and adopted. If we vote on it, then it's, uh, and it's brought before us. And, uh, so let's move on. We just have a few more items. We are looking to, uh, just redo the designation of a voting delegate to the NISBA conference. I believe just to appoint Erin Croyal, the voting delegate, uh, for the NISBA conference. Typically, we have folks from the legislative advocacy, uh, committee, since they are closely involved and are up to speed on all the resolutions that, uh, we have someone on that committee doing. So I make a motion to appoint Erin Croyal as the voting delegate for the NISBA conference.
Second.
Same with Pat. We'll, uh, we'll vote before Erin has a chance to say anything. Uh, go ahead, I'm sorry, uh, Tricia, go ahead.
Rob Ainsley?
Yes.
Erin Croy?
Yes.
Sean Everly Bradley?
Yes.
Eldred Harris?
Double yes. Thanks, Erin.
Oralee?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Oh, yes.
Patricia Wazle?
Yes.
There's, there are some votes that really, everybody's so enthusiastic about it. That's really good. Thank you, Erin, for, uh.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, you don't have to at least go, you can do it. It will be virtual. They did cancel any in-person events. And Dr. Brown, even virtually, you're not presenting or you are?
No, sir.
Okay, right.
There isn't a lot, uh, there isn't a lot of presentation in this one.
Yeah, they've, uh, pulled the plug on most everything. Typically, Dr. Brown, they have you present to try to, uh, spread the word and, uh, but you're doing that in other ways.
Working on something else, uh, hopefully enough.
Oh, very good. And, um, because there's a lot of challenges out there, Dr. Brown, at the superintendent level, at the teacher level, at the student level. And, uh, it would have been good to, uh, hear your folks. Other discussion items? Anything that we know of? And anyone?
Right.
Anything else, um, saying no at this point? Do want to, uh, really highlight upcoming dates of importance, um, because we are looking at, well, first we'll look at, uh, this Thursday, October fourteenth. And Sean, you wanted to speak to the new roots hearing?
Yes, on Thursday, uh, this Thursday at six PM, both in this room as well as virtually, there'll be a hearing for New Roots Charter School. A reminder to our community, this is not about the Hethic City School District. Any and all, uh, comments, um, things that will be shared will be sent directly to the Charter School Institute. The only reason why we are hosting the, um, public forum is because New Roots is within the Hethic City School District. But this is not something that we are leading or running. This goes to the Charter School Institute and we send over all comments from there.
By law, we have to. We don't have a choice.
That's right.
And we have no vote about the outcome.
That's right.
And we just need to make sure, well, it's been coming on us to make it public. This is certainly making it public, but Tricia notices, so going out, going out again, I'm sure. This is, uh, there's no, uh, there's no need for a quorum. Board members are not involved. We've been through this many times over the last, oh, fourteen years. I, uh, thanks, Sean, for being, being here. I have to travel, uh, that afternoon. This will be the first one I've missed. You know, you never know. We've had some where there'd be quite a few people. There were some that was just, uh, us sitting here for half an hour waiting to see if anybody would, uh, show up. It's not necessary to be in person or to be online to, uh, offer any comments that you wish. All comments can be sent directly to Tricia, the board clerk, and the board clerk, uh, will forward any and all information, a, a tape of the meeting, um, a minutes of it, well, really a transcript of the meeting. That all goes to, uh, the SUNY Charter School Institute in Albany and it's really, it's not in our hands. And we thank Tricia for this task. Tricia, I don't think you've had one of these before, right? Oh, this is, uh, you're doing it for Tricia. So it's really just gathering information. Sean is just gonna be here just to, it's all public comment. There's no, no action taken, uh, and board members don't, uh, don't, don't need to be, be here or participate. And obviously, uh, we'll, uh, we look forward to, uh, getting that out of the way. Next Tuesday, there's going to be, we're flipping, uh, finance work session, facilities work session. Facilities typically goes first at five o'clock. We're gonna flip it and, uh, finance work session will go first at five. There's going to be a fairly deep dive into the healthcare, uh, costs and delivery systems and really overview of our self-funded healthcare, uh, system, uh, of the district. We are self-funded, we run it all ourselves and it's an opportunity to, uh, now that we have, uh, more information and we have split everything out, we can, um, we can just really review. And that will be a very important meeting for, uh, board members to attend. It is all Zoom and virtual, so hopefully, uh, find some time on five o'clock, uh, on Tuesday, October nineteenth, facilities. We're just, uh, really, uh, cranking through and looking at design and development for phase three. And we'll talk about that some at six thirty, I think. But, uh, so those are the two upcoming events. And Dr. Brown, we're, we're pretty early. And, uh, unless anybody has anything else that they wish to, uh, share.
I have a question about what the, uh, we, we discussed.
Sure.
I was wondering how, um, what the administration is doing to, um, republius to the students and teachers. We want to encourage this, right?
Really? So we've sent out emails, but Adam, I actually remember last night you said you were helping, you would help me advertise that, right?
Yeah, so we, you certainly press this, this super body, but, um, yeah, it's also more timely throughout.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so we, we could send out another emails directly to students, just letting them know. And reminding them that they need parental consent. Um, anything else? Posters, what do you think would be helpful?
Posters would be great. If these things could be announced to all the schools, somewhere should report, uh, uh, great, uh, system. Also hear it and not have to, uh, not relying on people seeing it somewhere.
Right.
Yeah, we, now, now that we have more details, uh, we'll certainly, um, push it out as well.
Thanks, guys. Great.
Book calls as well would be great.
Robo calls.
Robo calls.
Yeah, we do that. Some of the parents I know, caregivers I know now say, oh my gosh, another call. So that's the only other kind of laughing, that's, that's all.
I'm sorry, I communicated that to you, Lily. Yes, but there are, there are a large number of robocalls that come out. Last, uh, last word, Pat?
I have no last words.
Dr. Brown, um, we'll let you all, it's, every day is a busy day, so let's, uh, let you all get to it. Thanks, everyone.